I'd like to rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like a motion to accept the agenda. So moved?
Second.
All in favor? Or any discussion? Any discussion? No? All in favor? The next item on the agenda is the business meeting from June 21st, 2016. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? The next item is public comment. Does anybody want to get up and speak? Jill?
Good evening. I know tonight you're going to be taking a vote for the vice chairman, and I want to reiterate again on why I think this would be a good opportunity for either Ms. Trotta or for Chris Redding. And the reason I state this is the vice chairmanship, it is a secondary role. It doesn't take up a lot of time. The role of the school committee member from West Newbury that is going to be on the building project committee is going to take up a great deal of time. The person who's on that committee should be a person who can hit the ground running as a representative from the town of West Newbury. Ms. Redding has twice said, or at least twice said, that due to personal commitments and her family, she couldn't take on the role of the vice chairman. Ms. Trotta had stated that she felt she wasn't ready for the vice chairmanship. I would like you to both reconsider this. I personally think that Andy Murphy, it's hard for me to say this, is the best person from West Newbury to be on the building project committee. He's had a year of experience. He knows what's going on with the building. He's had a year or two work with Dr. McQueen and the rest of the team. He is your ideal candidate from West Newbury to fit that position. I think that the role of the vice chairmanship is not going to be as much work, as much time. I'd like the two of you to consider taking the vice chairmanship nomination if it's given, and nominate or choose Andy to be on the building project meeting. It makes sense to me. Thank you for allowing me time.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, moving on. The next item is superintendent's report, MSBA update.
All right. Thanks very much. Before I get into my report, I just wanted to recognize Warren Dixon. He's one of our former custodians who's recently passed, and he dedicated a lot of his time here over at Switzer School in Merrimack. And Jack asked if we might have just a moment of silence for Warren Dixon. Thanks very much. So with the MSBA report, generally, there's not going to be too much to say right now. More will be coming as we get through the summer. Greg is on, is working on a report for the enrollment of our schools. It involves connecting with the towns and working through the states, different kinds of reports that we've got to do. I'm working on the programming component, our curriculum component. The one part that comes up tonight as sort of a key thing to think about is just today I got an email from the Board of Selectmen over in Merrimack, and they've asked if they couldn't have until after their meeting on August 1st to make their decisions and to get them to us. Their meeting schedule is a little bit intense right now, and they would really like to take advantage of that August 1st deadline. So I was thinking that if we were to extend that flexibility to every Board of Selectmen, that would be a benefit with their request that they respond by the morning of August 2nd, because then we'll have our meeting that night. So if anybody has an objection, I'm happy to listen to it, but it seemed to make sense that we give them as much time as we can. You know, the state has us under a deadline, and it would make sense to move forward in the best way for everybody. So unless anybody has an objection, I'd like to extend that to everybody. Sound all right? Okay. So what I can say is that we're on track. As far as I can see, the building committee is the next thing that we have to tick off our chart. That's due to the State Department by August 8th, and we're scheduled to have a meeting on the 2nd, so I think, you know, from what I can see, everything should go along pretty well. Are there any questions about, you know, where we are at that process? The school building committee is really the next thing we have to think about. Okay, so that's all I had to really talk about.
Okay. The next, I, thank you, Jeff. The next item on the agenda is the office of vice chair for the school committee. According to the Pawtucket Regional School District's regional agreement, at the first scheduled meeting of the regional school district committee, after the annual election of all member towns, the boss, I'm sorry, the regional district school committee shall organize in accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 16A, known as regional school committee organization. The chairmanship, vice chairmanship, and secretary positions shall be revolving with one position from each town. No member shall hold more than one office, I'm sorry, no town shall hold more than one office. The Pawtucket Regional School Committee acted to reorganize and to fill seats for offices at the May 17th, 2016 business meeting. The motion to approve the nominee for vice chair failed. It failed again at the June 21st, 2016 business meeting. A retreat for members of the school committee was conducted on the evening of July 6th, 2016, for the purpose of strengthening the committee's unity of purpose. Filling the office of vice chairman will be revisited tonight at the July 19th, 2016 business meeting. The office of vice chair rotates annually. A representative from West Newbury must hold the office of vice chair for the 2016-2017 cycle. Can I have any nominations? Jack?
Nominate Andy Murphy.
One second.
I'll second that.
And just, so just go into a vote. All in favor? Well, no, Andy's not here tonight, but he's now going to serve the remainder of this year as vice chair for the Pawtucket Regional School Committee. And the next item on the agenda is the introduction of the West Newbury Police Chief. Reed is the new police chief in West Newbury and began the position this past winter. Since his appointment, Chief Reed has proven himself to be a reliable resource and valuable-
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Can we dispense with the reading? We have it, I think.
I can do it. I can take it from here. So I invited Chief Reed, and Chief, if you'd like to just take a chair up to the edge here with Wayne, you can join us here at the table.
Thank you.
And Chief Reed, as you saw in your packet, joined the town in about the late part of January. I think it was actually January 25th, and he and I had similar appointment dates, so a couple of years apart. So in any case, Chief Reed and I have been working really closely together, as we have with the other chiefs of police and other fire departments, et cetera. And I thought it would be a good idea for the chief, for Art, to come and just talk with us a little bit about what he sees as important and, you know, his role, and if you have any questions for him, you could ask him some questions. You'll remember that the SRO position was kind of a hot topic in the fall, and although we didn't move forward with it at that time, Chief Reed and I would like to consider, you know, moving forward at some point with that position. And so I thought, rather than getting right into that discussion with him, it would be a better thing to get to know him a little bit, find out a little bit about what he stands for, you know, before we get into talking turkey about positions. So Chief, maybe you could just give us a little background, a little bit of information about yourself?
Well, I'm impressed that you knew it was January 25th. It's like an anniversary day, so I'm sure in a year's time, you'll remember it again to give me an anniversary gift.
I will next time, now that I know.
Well, I appreciate the board having me here tonight. It's kind of long overdue. It was kind of, I guess, I guess a timing issue more than anything else. The board doesn't know. I retired after 31 years of law enforcement in the state of New Hampshire, but I am a native of Massachusetts. I was born and bred here quite a long time ago. I left and I came back. I retired, as I said, after 31 years, the last 14 as a police chief. So this is, I guess, not my first time around the horn, so to speak, with being a police chief. As the superintendent said, obviously, I have a passion, obviously, with community policing, and more so, I have even more of a passion with, obviously, school resource officer. And I don't take that lightly, because during probably a third of my career, I spent time being a school resource officer before it had such a nice ring to it as an SRO. They had other names for it during, I guess, the early 90s. And for 10 years, I spent my time as a school resource officer in SU 16, which is part of the Exeter School District right over the border. So when I talk about SROs, I've lived the dream. It was probably the best part of my career during those 10 years was probably being an SRO. Not because I got to work days, because I've been working days for an awful long time now, but I found it probably most rewarding, because I was able to actually see some type of impact on the student body. And the student body that I dealt with was more than twice the size of the body of this town. So to me, I looked at it as an up, not as a down, because there'll be less kids to, obviously, mentor. And I found that as an important part of my job, as well as being a coach. I'm sure the doctors talked about, I had given some of my time this past year as a cross-coach to the varsity and JV, and that's no different than what I did when I was with Exeter. I had spent, I think, five or six years being one of the coaches and actually going to state championships. And your current coach, I actually coached. So when I found that out, I really knew that I was getting old. When Dan was one of my students in coaching back quite a long time ago, but I found the town here very similar to where I came from. I've worked for a number, I think, four different police departments during my 31 years. So I've tried to bring a wealth of knowledge and community-based programs to West Newbury. I know the town was looking for some change. I am the first outside police chief, I think, in the history of the police department. So there's probably quite a few eyes on me, I would imagine, but that's okay. That comes with the burden of being a police chief. But I welcome the opportunity, obviously, working with the superintendent and the principals and all the teachers, because if that wasn't expected of me, I wouldn't know what to do with myself. Because I, to me, that's probably one of the biggest parts of our job as police officers and as, obviously, as a police chief. And it's mentoring the men and women that work for me in the police department, as well as the student body. So I welcome the time that I'm going to be spending here, which will not be short, it will be quite long. This will be probably the last place that I end my career as a law enforcement officer, will be West Newbury. Unfortunately, like all of us, time is against me. So I foresee my career ending here in West Newbury. And like I said, it's very similar from the town that I came from. So I see there's a lot of similarities and similar needs, and I look forward to working with the board in those endeavors, as obviously, as with the superintendent.
So does anybody have any questions for Art? This is your chance.
This is a chance to throw rocks at me if you like.
No, no. Here you go.
Could you just describe what your general role was as a SRO in Exeter? And were you actually based in the school, or were you based out of the police station, and you'd just come to the school every once in a while?
Well, in the olden days, before they called it the SRO, I guess I didn't realize how difficult I had it until looking forward to how good the current school, school resource officer has it now. I had the task of being the school resource officer to the high school, to the middle school, which is now, well, actually, then it was called a junior high school, now it's called a middle school, and two elementary schools, and four daycare centers. So I never really had a chance to sit in one place at any given time. During that 10 years, I also taught the DARE program, from the parents to the high school, to the junior high school, to the elementary. So there was really no dust on me, so to speak, to where now it's transitioned to where Exeter has it, is their school resource officer is really only for the high school. The middle school is in another town now, and the elementary school has other officers dealing with that. So I guess I didn't know how bad I really had it, or how much work I really had to do compared to what they're doing now. But I guess, as I see it here in this school district, the officer, I guess, if you look at 100% of a person's time, I would say probably the vast majority of it would probably be here at the high school. Just from my own personal experience, that's where it's probably most warranted. And I guess if I had to put a number on it, I would probably say 85%. But obviously, that's flexible, because depending on what's going on in the school year, the end of the school year here at the high school is certainly a lot busier than probably the elementary school. And that's not to take away from what they're doing there, but I think the needs are probably greater here at the high school. Maybe at the beginning of the year, maybe more so at the elementary school, and then in between will obviously be the middle school. So I would see the officer would probably have some place that's already in place to sit here and do some work, but also probably a place to, I guess, collect his or her thoughts at the other schools. Obviously, we don't need that much space to, we're used to working in cars. So anything more spaced than sitting in a car is probably like the Taj Mahal.
And we already established offices at the schools, so there's already a place here, you know, so that's not something new for us.
Question. If we're going to move ahead with this position, I can see work being done here and at the middle school, but how would it work in the elementary schools, where you work for West Newbury and the other elementary schools are in the two other towns?
Yeah, so we're already using a police officer over in Groveland in this sort of a position over in Bagnell.
Okay.
And Josh does a great job. It's not really formalized, like we're hoping to do here, but he does a great job, and he's a great liaison for the school. And then Eric and others in Merrimack are helping us over in Merrimack. So, you know, it's not like we're not doing anything, but this would be a more formalized position than we've had in the past. So I think it would evolve over time, and we'd see, you know, how to really handle everything. So like Art was saying, I see more of the time really being spent here on this campus with middle and high school, and maybe a little bit of Paige, you know, in there. But we already have some connections with the other police stations and the towns' schools already.
No, I'm all for it. I just figured if we have police officers working in the other two communities, the students would already recognize them before they come into the school a little bit and get to understand that they work in their communities and all.
Yeah. Do you know Josh Sendoney at all?
I do.
Yeah, so Josh is our liaison for Bagnell.
Okay.
And again, it's not quite as formalized as we're thinking about for this position, but it would be a next step for us, and, you know, as we continue to grow. And this would be something that we would talk about, maybe, you know, as in August, for instance, Art could come back, and we could have the job description and everything, and we could talk through it and give a little bit more detail. This is really more about getting to know Art a little bit, and, you know, the difficulty sometimes is we don't get to know people before we have to discuss issues, and then, you know, that doesn't always make it easy.
Doug, as you described, it's really no different than, I guess, where I came from. I mean, I, at one time, I worked for the Exeter Police Department. That's kind of where I started my career.
Right.
And obviously, I have moved on a number of different times, but I was still part of the same school district. And I had an officer working for me at the time, even though we didn't call it a school resource officer. It's how the doctor described it in the elementary school that was in the town that I left there. We always made, I always made sure if it wasn't me, it was one of my other officers at the school. So when you talk about that transition, going from elementary school to a middle school to a high school, then it's pretty much flawless. No, it might not be the same officer, but it's flawless in the context of, it's not going to be a surprise to see a law enforcement officer in today's world.
No, I think it's great that they'll be there. I think it's, especially for the early ages, so they get comfortable around these positions. I'm just looking for continuity from town to town. So once they get on to the middle school property, that becomes under West Newbury's jurisdiction anyways, so that would be logical to have a West Newbury officer working in that building. That's all, that's all I was looking for. I didn't know if they were going to schedule someone from one town to work in all three buildings, all three towns.
No, we hadn't thought about it that way.
I wasn't sure. I put it out, I didn't know.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
But I absolutely support it. We have this, I'm on the Woodya Regional School Committee, and we have the Havel police working right out of that school and doing, all the kids know who they are.
Yeah.
It works out well.
Yeah. So any other questions for Art? All right. Well, thanks again, Art, for coming out, and you and I can talk about what the timing might be to, you know, schedule, this is an item, the SRO is an item for everybody.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely. I appreciate you all taking the time and letting me do my little spiel tonight. Maybe the next month you can throw a line. But I appreciate you allowing me the couple minutes to talk, and it was a pleasure. I look forward to our next meeting.
Thanks, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is policies for, there's two of them.
Do you want me to take that one too, Lisa, for this?
Yep.
Okay. So I think all of you are familiar with some of the new requirements by the state, as far as the governor signing into law, the opioid changes and legislation. So there are a couple of different things we have to do. One is to adopt and post and distribute some policies. And the state Department of Ed is supposed to be coming back to superintendents with some guidance on this, and I've been in touch with them, but they haven't completed that part yet. So the Massachusetts Association of School Committees published out two modeled policy documents that would fill the bill for the short term, and it would give us time to really consider what more we might want to do or shift it around. So what I'm suggesting is, in order to meet the compliance deadlines, that we adopt the two modeled policies that you see here. It will keep us in compliance with what the state's requiring, and then when the policy committee comes up in their subcommittees for the upcoming year, we can bring these back again and consider them again, and, you know, make any changes we think might be necessary. That will also, I hope, give the state time to provide the guidance that was promised. So it's my recommendation that we move forward to adopt these, at least for the short term, and to meet the compliance requirements by the state.
So moved. Second.
Both together?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion?
So I just had a question about the first one. The first paragraph talks about students not using, consuming, is that, is that on school grounds, or is that extend?
It's anywhere. Yep. So for students, this policy is any school-related event. So it could be, like, for high school kids who go on trips, or who are at a function, a dance, or a sporting event. Anything school-related, it doesn't have to be right here in the school.
See, and I look at that as if they're at home, and they're drinking, and they get caught, and they get in trouble. So does it extend to that or not?
No, it doesn't extend beyond what we can control.
Okay.
So can you point to where you're looking at?
Well, the whole first paragraph, I think, nowhere, the first sentence.
Oh, turn the page.
J I C A.
The last line says school property or school function.
But it says prohibits the use or consumption on school property, but the line right above that.
Yeah. So we can only control what we can control. So that's why it ends with the "on school property or any school function." So anything that's within our jurisdiction, that's where we, our controls would stop.
See, and I look at those two sentences as being separate. So I guess the question becomes, can there be disciplinary action on students who are not at a school function, on school property, anything like that, and that's just-
There can be. So a student who breaks the law, and that's brought to our attention, we can actually impose our school discipline on them. But for, in terms of what we're dealing with here, and that's for anything, right, not just alcohol, drugs. So that can come back to the student where they break the law, that comes to our attention, and we can impose a sanction on them. But in terms of them using alcohol or drugs or other kinds of substances here, this, that's what this is really pertaining to.
In addition to the MIA has policies with accountability for all athletic-type things as well.
Yeah.
And when we meet in the fall, you're on the committee, we can dissect it to make it any way that, any way that the public can interpret it correctly. And we'll be bringing in that policy as well in MIA.
Yes. So I think Wayne brings up a good point, that these are just the model policies, and I haven't touched them, because I don't, I don't want to touch them. They're recommended to us. Once we get into committee, then we can start to think about them, and I can get more guidance from the state. So I'm just trying to help us meet the deadline and the compliance issue that's in front of us.
Any other questions? So can I have a motion to accept, I guess I'm going to break it down into, can I break it down into policies now?
Sure.
Okay.
I think we already have the motion in the second, though.
So can I have a vote to accept the policy? Policies.
Yeah. Great.
Did you say yes, Doug?
Make it.
Okay.
I threw you off. I used my left hand.
So that was unanimous. So the next item on the agenda is business manager's contract. So the committee approved a contract of employment for business manager on July 21st, 2015, Section 7.0 includes a provision for an additional one-year extension upon successful completion of goals set forth by the superintendent after the first year. The business manager successfully completed his goals, and the contract of employment is extended by one year, July 1st, 2016, to July 30th, 2019. Can I have a motion to approve the contract of employment for Ms. LeBrack, the business manager, for the term of-
Seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor to extend the contract?
Welcome, my boy, Greg.
Good work, Greg. Good work. He's a keg mom.
So the next item on the agenda is the school committee email addresses. The school district is responsible for email management regulations. As a member of the school committee for the regional district manager of email, of, management of email differs from personal email account. It is recommended that each member of the school committee use a district email address to conduct business related to the role of a member of the school committee. And attached is directions on how to access your Pawtucket Regional School District email from home. And maintaining a boundary between personal and official communications can be important. Using a personal email account for official communication can lead to the exposure of personal communications. Would anybody like to discuss that?
Could I just add to it? So Dennis Buck brought to my attention that this would be a really good idea for us to begin thinking about, and so I'm introducing the idea to you tonight with the hope that by the fall, we could get everybody on to the PRSD official email accounts, so that there's not a point at some, at some time in the future where your personal email and your school, your official email are somehow blended together, and, you know, you're exposed on the personal side.
Brian?
I tried doing this at home. Wouldn't take it.
Well, we can help you out with that, Brian. This is an introduction.
I'll come over afterwards. No, no, I followed his instructions. It just, it wouldn't, it kept telling me it wasn't a valid address.
So would it be advantageous if any of us need help to contact Dennis Buck directly?
Yeah, that would be a help. Chris Heather handles.
So I have two things. One is that I find it more healthy- One is that I find it more helpful to have, I set up a specific school committee Gmail account, because I can put it on my phone. And when something comes in, I can look at it immediately, because I know people who work and myself who are involved in many different things. It's hard to keep track of all these different, and it'll be like a week or two weeks, and I'll be like, oh crap, I never looked. And so, in part, that's one of my problems with not having ever done this. The second issue I had, and I've been in touch with Dennis about this, is now that in the school system, if they type my name, it automatically goes to my PRSD account, even if it's a parent issue. So I think that issue has to be separated at this point in time, because I did not do something I was supposed to do for a middle school event, because it was going to my PRSD account, and I never knew that they were. So I think, I think that also has to be dealt with within the, within the system.
Yeah.
Dennis tried to do it, and I don't think it's actually working the way he intended it, but I can follow up with him.
Yeah, so you're not the only person who has two email addresses. So for instance, Lisa has two email addresses as well, and I have to be always thinking about, you know, that it's going to the right email address. The other part is, I wonder if, like me, Dennis is able to have for you your PRSD email go right to your phone.
That's what I would like, yeah.
There's a way for us to do that.
I set it up on mine, it was really easy.
Yeah, there's a way for us to do that, and it makes it really easy for me, and I think it could make it really easy for you as well, to have it go right to your phone, and then you don't have to log on and all that sort of thing. So I'm just offering that.
Brian?
My only concern going to your, especially your personal phone, if something happens, they're going to take that phone.
Right.
They're free.
Could be.
I've got another one in two hours. Let him grab that.
I have a question, because I'm on it right now, but I'm in Gmail through PRSD. But this has it in Outlook. So I, because I'm, I logged in here, and it has me on.
And it has the Penn Tucket symbol up at the top.
Yeah, it has the Penn Tucket symbol at the top.
Yeah.
And I'm on Gmail. It's a Gmail.
Well, here's what I would like to do. This is an introduction to, we'd like to get everybody down that path. So rather than struggle with it right now, it, it's just something to start, to plant in everybody's mind.
Okay.
And I'll get Dennis to help us all out. So it's not an emergency that we do it, but Dennis is thinking, if we don't begin to do this, it's never going to get done, and somebody at some point is going to regret it, and he doesn't want to see that happen. So this is just an introduction. We'll get there at some point, and I'll talk with Dennis about possible next steps. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
I would just make sure that Dennis can somehow make it so that if parent, if teachers are trying to get in touch with us as parents, it doesn't go to our school committee account.
We can, we'll work on it.
The next item on the agenda is responses from the West Newbury Board of Selectmen. So there were two requests for information resulting from the June 21st business meeting of Penn Tucket Regional School Committee. On June 22nd, 2016, a letter requesting minutes from the meeting was sent to the West Newbury Board of Selectmen, which is attached. Specifically, a request was made for the minutes of the West Newbury Board of Selectmen meeting that generated a letter dated May 18th, 2016. On June 22nd, a letter requesting information about timeline and scope of work for the Page School Project was sent to the West Newbury Board of Selectmen, as seen attached in the packet. Specifically, a request was made for the.
A GANT chart.
GANT chart, documenting the project timeline and scope of work, so that the determination can be made about the potential impact on the start of the school year and possible need for background checks for individuals having unsupervised access to students.
I could maybe take it from here, if that's all right. So rather than pursue this, through the selectmen, I've been attending the meetings, and that's been helpful. So the long and the short of it was, I'm just interested in them completing the project on time or not, and if it's not, then I need to take some action. So the ventilator units are being just delivered today, and so that by the end of today, they should have six of those units on site. And the complication was that because of that delay, they had to reconfigure their work, and it was making me a little bit nervous about the end of school. So by going to the meetings, I learned that that was the case. They're not sure if they're going to finish on time or not. They're pretty sure that they can. I was just at a meeting today, and, you know, there are a couple of other things. The air dampeners are still on order, they're not delivered yet. So they've got a few complications going right now, but they're thinking that they'll be able to finish on time. What I asked for is, on the August 9th meeting that we have, that they have a floor plan of the school, and they have a color coding of what classrooms are accessible, which ones are not, where can people go? Because teachers, as you know, come back to set up their classrooms. So on August 9th, I'll be able to move forward with communication to the staff about who can go where, what can happen. And they're still anticipating by the end of August to be completed, so, you know, we'll see what happens there.
Is this affecting the cleaning of the school?
We're coordinating the cleaning with the efforts that are there right now. So so far, I don't have any big worries about that. But again, I won't know until like August 9th, when they give me the lowdown on where can we go and where can't we go. So we've been trying to follow them through and make sure everything is clean as we can, so that it's not a big rush at the end.
So there is stuff on back door?
Yeah, the air dampeners are still on order. They put a rush on it, it should be here within 10 days.
Did, did the, when the contract was put out, did West Newbury ever put down it has to be done by? Did they ever approach you or say anything, or what?
I don't have those kinds of details, and that's why I tried to ask questions, and I've inserted myself, is that it's not my project, it's not the district's project. So by attending the bi-weekly meetings, I'm able to just keep abreast of the project and its work. And I think on August 9th, that's really the drop dead date for them to let me know where everything will be.
Now, I noticed on your, the letter here, that the school indicates that courier checks will not be required for work during the summer. The need of courier checks will be required if work extends into the next school year.
Right.
Is, is, is the work they're going to do going to interfere with the education?
Yeah, well, it won't interfere with the education, because if it's not done by the end of school, they'll begin a new work shift that's after school. But in that case, I'll need to take provisions for the after-school program. So you see the complications that can come up. So I'll know on the 9th where they are, and from there, we'll have regular meetings, and I think we'll get through it just fine.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Any other questions?
And the other letter, did we cover that one?
So it was in regards to the minutes of the.
Yeah, so you have the response to that one, too.
So anybody have any discussion on that, or else?
The only thing is, it stated that between the selectmen and employee? Employee who, West Newbury?
I think they're administrative assistant, is the person that they refer to.
So the selectmen's secretary?
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay. So that, that, in the future, I would appreciate it if anyone sends us any kind of letters that they be approved by the property authorities, not just dictated to someone over the phone or something, or an email. Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, so that was the last item on the agenda. So can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Set it. All in favor? Any polls?
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.